Be nice to everybody and you will be winner.
He went on to talk to Bulger about what he's gonna do to my wife and then I hit him. The court, by the way, said not guilty than any man that's had any reasonable guts about him at all would have hit him. So, thank you court.
So, next time you call me a boy, I'm gonna follow that and I'm gonna hit you.
Yeah, you ain't man enough to stand up to me, baby.
Or call me a boy again. Or better yet, why don't you call me [BLEEP] like you've been calling me? I'm gonna call our regularly scheduled meeting to order. Um, I'm gonna ask Pastor Chris to lead us in a word of prayer.
Father, you say let brother love continue. Father, we asking that you would do this right now into Tarrant. Bring the family back together, Father. Father, we asking, Father, that confusion would go right now in the name of Jesus. We asking, Father, that that bickering would go right now in the name of Jesus. Father, we, we don't need this in Tarrant no longer, Father. Father, we asking, Father, that you would just rain down right now your spirit, Father, in Tarrant right now. But that would be peace among the people, Father. That love will continue from heart to heart. Give me the blessing, yes, in our son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
The reason I'm here is just to clear up a point. I hear rumors against me saying that I don't garbage. I worked with the city hall, with this city for more than ten years with the previous mayor. And these rumors, I pick it up garbage, together with Mr. Hart. We worked for fourteen years. That's what keep our street clean. Ms. Veronica, District One, she's raising these kind of rumors against me and I don't like it. Because I...
Before you go, little Father, can you just look at this and I'll show you why I thought it was you? No, look at this for me.
Oh, you make a mistake.
No, I, when I said that to him, I said it's a possibility I was wrong. I said I was willing to show, did I not? Here's the tag and if it's wrong, I apologize, like I apologized then. And I personally apologize now. So, that's the tag number and I got video. So, that's one thing. I'm not too big to say that I was wrong. So, when I say something, I'm gonna be able to prove it and be grown enough to admit it. So, when I mention it, you know, did I not say that? I could be wrong.
But I don't say, somebody told me.
No.
He, 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 Mr. Hart told me.
I know, but I'm saying when I said it to him, I was saying I was willing. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong. So, here's the tag number. So, I'm not too big to say I'm wrong.
I respect you. I respect you to be respected.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
I just want you to let you know.
Thank you very much. Uh, and I would be very happy the way I say I, I work, help it up. I continue helping. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, every one of you.
I just wanna apologize. So, Ms. Torres actually came to my office.
Yeah.
Um, and told me about it and I told him I'm gonna give him time to, to actually address the council. And I just personally wanna apologize, um, as, on behalf of the city.
Yeah.
As well as, as, as a person because she's spread rumors about me too.
Well, you know what? The thing is, okay, I, like, I apologize, you know what? This is not the day or the time for me to entertain that. So, we'll just wait and deal with it in court, okay?
My suggestion is, don't say nothing because I, I'll vote for you. I'll vote for you.
No, look, before you leave, I wanna show you the video that I said, I will show you.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. It's fine.
Okay.
Everyone make mistakes.
My suggestion, don't, don't, don't...
No, I don't. I don't.
Be nice to everybody and you will be winner.
You know, my thing is, like I said before...
Thank you, everyone here.
Like I said before, I'm not too big to say that I make mistakes and I'm human. But the thing is, when I say something, I will be willing enough to show you why I said it and the proof. I oftentimes say, do you wanna see the proof? It's a documentation. No one has ever wanted to see it. But the reason why I'm saying again, here it is on my phone and you're welcome to see it. So, you know, I'm not gonna entertain what the mayor saying because this is not the time or the place. The time and the place is coming very soon.
Chief Wendell Major is due to be removed from the office of the Chief of Police of the City of Tarrant for calls. Now it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Tarrant, Alabama, while in regular session on Wednesday, November the sixth, twenty twenty-four, um, as follows. Section one, that the City Council of the City of Tarrant does hereby immediately remove for calls Wendell Major from the office of the Chief of Police for the City of Tarrant by a majority vote of those elected to the council. I make a motion that we approve this resolution as read. But being that, uh, the council refuses to act, uh, I'm going to respectfully ask, uh, that the clerk, uh, put this on the next agenda for me to bring up.
Mr. Mayor, the response, in the response to your allocation there that the council refuses to second your vote, first of all, you didn't, you did not properly ask for the second. You've been mayor here for four years now and you still don't know how to do the proper language. But let me, let me bring this airborne teacher. I'm glad, I'm glad he's done this now. I'm glad, I'm glad he's done this now. He's had his say now for several, several months. Okay, Chief Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Would you come here, please? The council voted to have an individual do research on the allegations against the chief. Chief, these allegations, were they presented to, uh, any law enforcement agencies in the state of Alabama to, to check out if any of these things are true? And you, would you, that you would have to have criminal charges brought against you?
Yes, sir, they were submitted.
Was there, was there any criminal charges brought against you?
No, sir.
So, what they found out was that actually this report did not show anything that you had done criminally.
Correct.
That's correct, okay? They want to show that. So, the mayor has been saying this every month, every council meeting for the last several months. Thank you, have a seat. Now, let, let me bring y'all something else. Mayor Newton harassed, first of all, he made contact to a person who was off on medical leave, which is illegal. Then, because she told him about it, then he dropped her pay grade. And then started taking retaliation, retaliatory measures at her, fussing at her, doing discrimination, discriminated against her. She took this, she took this to court and won a large lawsuit against the City of Tarrant because of Mayor Newton's actions. This is the case right here.
Actually, she did not win a large lawsuit. The insurance company...
All this that he's coming up with because, against the police chief, which was founded to be unmarried and that it was, it was something, it was something that the mayor did because on a certain night, the mayor followed me and the police chief out of my car and he came up to me, said, "F you, F you, F you." And I made a comment, "Got a quarter on chief tonight." In court, listen to this, in court...
And you also need to tell them what else you called me.
In court, in court, he made, he testified that he, only reason he, he said, "I'm gonna F your wife, I'm gonna F your wife." He went on to talk to Bulger about what he's gonna do to my wife and then I hit him. And the court, by the way, the court, by the way, said not guilty. That was fighting words than any man that's had any reasonable guts about him at all would have hit him. So, thank you, court.
So, next time you call me a boy, I'm gonna follow that and I'm gonna hit you.
Yeah, yeah, you ain't man enough to stand up to me, baby.
Or call me a boy again. Or better yet, why don't you call me [BLEEP] like you've been calling me?
Let's not go there. Let's stop, Tommy.
You wanna go there?
Tommy, please stop.
I've been sick and tired of dealing with you.
Tommy, please stop.
And your shenanigans for four years. So, if that's what you wanna do, then do it.
Tommy, Tommy, for me, just stop. Stop, Tommy. We gotta handle the city business. Stop, Tommy. Stop. Ah, stop, Tommy. But the thing is, you, you're not serving a purpose. Stop. It's about the city. It's not about you no more, not about me. At the court's hearing. Stop, Tommy. Just be quiet. Please, please.
Telling the truth.
Just stop. We gotta handle the city's business, y'all. If y'all wanna play these games, I don't wanna play.
And then, listen to me, all, all, he was all for the homosexual and all this happened.
I don't want it. I don't wanna hear it.
The reason he said, listen to me. The reason he said he got mad at me was because I might have assinuated that he was homosexual and he did not like homosexuals. I'm telling you what he said. It's in court. That's what he said.
So, that's the past. We can't move forward because y'all people gonna bring up all the stuff.
If, if, okay.
That's over with. You went to court for it. You won. That's over.
This is over with the police chief. It's over with the police chief.
Listen, my house got shot up two years ago and ain't nobody came and did a report. I get some techno.
It's over with the police chief. He won't drop.
Techno chief came and talked to me. The police took a report. But my house got shot up, my cop got shot up and the little girl still riding around here. I don't want y'all.
People dropped the police chief.
Y'all ain't right. Y'all ain't right. Nobody's for the shit.
And next time he has his up police chief, it'll be the same thing again.
And you will do it and I'm not backing down because I was put here for a reason. I was put here because of that. You've been doing this, terrorizing this city for sixteen years with your old school brand of just bigotry and hatred. So, I'm going to stall. So, I think that the council should probably discuss the situation that you've created where you have two fire chiefs. Because something similar to this.
You created that. You did that. That is not on us. You did that.
You were the ones that went to the personnel board and told them to be reinstated, so...
Nope. I wasn't people at court, but I know that you're the cause of us having two fire chiefs.
Okay.
And that we're gonna have to pay our nearly a half a million dollars. And the insurance is not gonna cover that. We've already received the denial.
So, you guys need to, you still have two fire chiefs, so you need to make a decision. Are you going to affirm, uh, my termination? Or are you going to, uh, go and, um, overturn, uh, this council's vote for Chief Bennett?
Evidently, he's trying to put something in here that's not on the agenda.
That's not on the agenda.
Is that legal?
Well, it's not about doing legal. This is about you guys have created a, that you have created a situation. You've gone to the, you've gone to the personnel board and asked them to reinstate a fire chief. Um, and I believe your exact words, uh, Council Bryant, was that to send it back to the council so you guys can decide. Well, that's exactly what they did. And so, you guys need to decide. We have two fire chiefs. They both show up to work. And you guys need to basically act.
Is that okay? When he gets back on the agenda, I'll respond. Is that okay?
I'm not, I'm not, I don't have to put it on the agenda. This is your doing.
No, you...
Just like how you put this resolution, just like how you did Resolution ninety-two thirty-seven.
And Mr. Bryant tried to help you out when he tried to bring him back. And you called the news just like you do all the time. And you said, "He's trying to hire back a big, uh, fire chief, blah, blah, blah." When only thing he was trying to do was actually make it work. He could not come back.
Oh.
So, now, here we are. That's on you.
Is that why he decided, is that why he decided to go to the personnel board and, and beg them to, to reinstate him so he can come back?
I don't know why he went to the personnel board. I wasn't there, but what I was there for, I just told you.
It was also Council Anderson. If you actually read the order that they sent and they made reference to it.
I know exactly who all three of them were. And I know what I said, so, huh. I'm just gonna tell the truth.
You guys have created this. You guys need to deal with it. So, you guys need to, to basically make a decision in terms of whether or not you're gonna affirm my termination of the first fire chief? Or are you going to overturn your, your selection of the second fire chief that you guys hired?
Ninety-two thirty-seven, Mayor Protem. The basketball game. But Mike, uh, uh, Mayor Protem, if he said that those documents that concerning the chief was presented to us at the council meeting, it should be in the gen, the following week's agenda stating that we did. And I checked that and I have that. It's not in there. And if anybody wanna see it, I'll show it to you. So, I can prove that.
Sure. Hello, if you don't know me, my name's Jason Rickles. I'm fire chief here for the City of Tarrant. And I'm not coming to try to get Patrick's job. Patrick's done a great job with his fire department since he's been here. He was a great lieutenant that worked for me, uh, great rookie when we hired him on. And, and Patrick is, is well beyond qualified to come back to run this fire department. We all know what the mayor did to me. We all know how he did it to me. We all know why he did it, but...
You were terminated because of the gun on Black Realtor and, and, and her college.
Sir, I, I don't get to choose the race of people that come to my house on false, valid, or false pretensions. I don't get to choose my race.
They were charged criminally.
They were all dropped, sir. Have you ever been charged?
They were dropped because you agreed to pay three thousand dollars to repair his camera.
Prove that. You're making that up. You're lying. You're lying just like all the time.
I'm lying?
So, yes. So, that's not why the charges were dropped. The charges were dropped because they were all false.
Did you agree to pay three thousand dollars for his camera?
I'm sorry that I can't pick the race of people who come to my house under false pretensions and, 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 and do wrong things at my house. I'm sorry. If I could have chose, I wouldn't have some children come to my house to do it. But I couldn't choose. I got in a situation. They lied. When the video camera and the video come out that we had of it, the Atlanta District, Fulton County District Attorney's Office dropped all charges against me. I have no charges.
After you agreed to pay three thousand dollars.
I have, I, that is not true. And, um, so I have no charges, so I don't know what he's talking about, my termination. If that's what he's terminated for, for felony charges, run my record right now. There's not no felony charges.
No, that's what the personnel board upheld.
I'm tired of the City of Tarrant having to pay money for his lawsuits.
That's what the personnel board upheld.
Y'all know about my offer. I can retire in twenty-two months. Patrick's got a few more years than that. Patrick's done a great job running this fire department. I told y'all I would, I would sign a hold harmless agreement and I would not sue this city for a single nickel if you just pay me my back pay, which has already been ordered by the personnel board. All right, pay my attorney's fees and then pay me for twenty-two months. I can tell you how much it's gonna be. I make a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. So, that's two hundred and forty thousand dollars over the next two years. And it's not even two years. It's lasting twenty-two months. And two hundred and forty thousand dollars is a lot less and we'll pay all these attorneys. I'll pay that attorney. So, just let me go away. Let me be done with him. Let me be done with this city. Let me not cost this city any more money.
If the council affirms this termination.
Okay? So, I mean, I don't know what termination he's talking about. He charged me with, uh, he, he fired me for a commission of a felony act. I've not, never committed a felony act in my life. He, he charged me with holding people at gunpoint in my house till police arrived. I've never held people at gunpoint in a day of my life. I've got the video to prove it. We all know he's lying. We all know he's a liar. I don't wanna cost the city any more money. I don't wanna interfere with Patrick running the fire department. I just want to be done. That's all I'm asking. Thank y'all.
Patrick, would you like to get up and speak? Again, this was created by this council.
It was not created by the law.
As they always do, they're trying to undermine everything that I do. And it backfired on them because they thought that they were gonna go down and undermine it and tell the council, bring, tell, tell the personnel board to send them back, which they did. And so, now we have this, this, this problem. Just like how they introduced this resolution trying to undo, uh, me firing two police officers, they should have introduced a resolution, a similar resol, uh, resolution when, uh, he was terminated. They knew that he was terminated because at that meeting, people talked about it. But the problem was, they were afraid because they didn't wanna actually have to stand up to citizens. Because if you remember, people were outraged at what he did. This made international news. This was an international news story. It went viral. And so, rather than, and then rather than, rather than, than facing citizens...
Exactly.
Rather than facing citizens, they decided not to do anything.
I'll face any citizen in this city any day.
Well, in the process of doing that, they've created this problem.
You created this problem. You terminated him. We terminated him. You want us to uphold that termination so you can get off scot-free, but I don't know if they're gonna do that. This gentleman is not a criminal by the meaning of the word criminal. Mr. Bryant, what is our recourse at this point? He said he does not want to interfere with Chief Bennett running the department. What recourse do we have at this point?
Well, we, we need to talk about that in executive session.
In executive session. Thank you.
Citizens, this is nothing more than a money grab.
Just like the people that you hire that sue us. Just a money grab.
It's all what this is.
Just a money grab. The same thing with everybody that you hire that suing. That's just a money grab. You've run this city into the ground.
I haven't run this city into the ground.
You've run this city into the ground.
The city council has to.
You have run this city into the ground.
You have run this city.
The city council has to.
If I may, can I speak to the resolution before the council round? I believe that resolution is about two employees with the police department who wanna return to work. I think one of them, we've already passed a resolution returning them to work. This is a second one. I think it's what the personnel board requested that we do. It will end their employment because they have not, end the issue with their employment. They have not been paid for some time. These people have families. They've been good employees. Let's just get them back to work and get them paid.
Have you spoken to the personnel board? Is this what they want?
Well... I, I, I would want to get some clarification based on what I've heard from them.
On what issue, Mr. Bryant?
I think it may implicate, I, I think it may implicate some other pending issues.
And just so citizens know, Sergeant Cynthia Morrow was terminated. She was the person, uh, that was responsible for investigating the death of the two-year-old. And she dropped the ball on that. That case had to get reassigned, uh, to someone else, um, who was able to actually get the person, the mother prosecuted. And Lashandra Jackson, uh, she was terminated, um, for doing conduct that was unbecoming of an employee uh, when she gave someone access, um, to the database that, uh, was legally, uh, we were told, Aliyah could not have access to the database.
Who was that, Mr. Mayor?
That was you.
Oh, I was not, though.
Yeah.
So, we terminated dispatch for letting the chief of police have access to the criminal database that he assigned.
Well, no, that was, uh, after Aliyah sent us the email saying that you weren't supposed to have access to it. Okay.
What happened with that, Mr. Mayor?
Well, at the time, it was still an ongoing investigation. If my memory serves me correctly, they, they said that they found something, but they weren't gonna move on it.
I, I disagree. I think you should check with them.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The video that I asked you about concerning me, did you give approval for that to go out?
No, ma'am.
I, I think we should just table this too. Mr. Bryant has, I mean, this one.
We've been waiting on this now eight months. And then the issue here is whether these employees deserve to be fired or not. We, we, we've reviewed it. There's just nothing left to do.
It's either yes or no.
Yes, it's... One of the, one of the, one of the employees, you all pa, already passed the resolution doing so.
Sergeant Morrow. My concern with you, baby, since you said you wanted some additional information.
I make the motion adjourned for about ten minutes.
Okay.
Oh, and just so the citizens know, we were supposed to go out and I guess have an executive session, but the council refused to talk to me, so they talked amongst themselves, so...
We never said we were having an executive session. We just said we were adjourned.
I stood there by the mayor.
Does the council know?
The council was provided with the press release, which details my reason for terminating, uh, Jason. And so, again, they chose not to do anything because they were cowards.
Was it in the minutes, ma'am? Was it in the minutes?
A press release doesn't, we don't move off of a press release, but you should have done was had a resolution.
No, that's not my job. The statute says I make the, I make the decision, I terminate, and then I have to inform the council. And that's exactly what I did. I informed the council at the very next meeting. You chose not to do anything about it, but that's not the manner there.
That's the problem now. You won't take accountability and responsibility for anything.
Madam Clerk, can we please have a vote?
The only thing that I'll say is that everything that Mr. Bryant said is a news article on AL.com that you can read. It was testified to in court, so that's all I'll say about that. Chief Rickles was fired before he even had his day in court. So, you know, the procedure is that the mayor had to bring it before the council, uh, and vote on it. A press release is not that, so, uh, that's the situation that we're involved in right now.
You need to take everything that Chuck Winburne says with the, uh, the grain of salt.
It's all a news article. All you have to do is read it.
I think what needs to happen and I, I think that citizens...
It's on the news article. There's so many people back here, rude.
Citizens are smart, um, and you should know what I'm up against. And you should know what Chuck Winburne actually represents. Let me read you a Facebook post that he made from April twenty-fourth, uh, twenty fifteen. Proud to be from Alabama, proud of my Confederate heritage, proud of my Confederate great-great-grandfather. If you think it's an embarrassment, then don't come here. They can have Cinco de Mayo and Black History Month and any of a number of black-only days and recognitions. But for us to celebrate our heritage, it's racist. I'm not sorry and I don't care. The Civil War was not about slavery. R.I.P. James Josiah Harrison Brown. So, when he gets up and speak and I ignore him, that is the reason why.
Well, he's not treating me that way.
They changed the news article, the truth of the news article and what was, uh, in the courtroom.
Okay.
But, um, I also wanna address the issue where I was almost ran over by a city council and nothing has been done about it yet. Not, not apologies, not anything. And she throwed up her middle finger, but she said she didn't. So, so, um, I, I'm gonna address that issue tonight. So, um, if we don't get anything, I have been asked to go by the, um, protocol. Um, nothing has been done by the police department. And I'm asking that, you know, even I've been told that I only have, have a report for that. But the police was called here and the camera shows what she did. So, I'm asking that Ms. Matthews be held accountable for trying to run me over, um, during a press conference here at the city council.
He's been claiming that I, I sold him, I fraudulently sold him properties for the past four years. And he's been saying that he's gonna sue me.
I haven't said I was gonna sue you.
But he's yet to sue me or he's yet to press charges because he can't, so...
Who can't?
If, 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 if that's what he wants to see, then he needs to, he needs to...
Chief Mayor. Can we go to police report right now?
Aye.
There is a scripture in the Bible and it's in Isaiah one and eighteen. Come now and let us reason together. All I've heard tonight and every other meeting has been I, me, you. I don't care what happens or goes on in this city, you're gonna be looked at as a whole. The people of Tarrant are suffering because emotions have gotten in the way. Everybody is, the emotions in here is so high right now till it's just breathtaking. And it should not be that way. The people out here is who is important. You guys have to put your agenda on the back burner and bring back the agenda for the city, for the citizens of this, this town. And until we do that, we're not gonna move. It's always blame placing. Everybody wants to blame this one for that, blame that one for this. You all are a group. When you all were out running for this council, you came in groups. I remember very well, Ms. Rat, uh, Mayor Newton and Ms. Freeman came to Apostle Page, a gathering that she had at her house. What happened? What happened? Where did all this hate and backbiting and name-calling? It's, it, this is just too much. It's too much. When are you guys gonna put the citizens in Tarrant back on the agenda where it goes? Front, front and center. When you guys leave here, you go home separately. The people here, this is, this is our town. I've been here over twenty years. And there's been things I wanted to say. And honest to God, I did not wanna come before you tonight. But when the Lord puts something on your heart, you have to say it. And I believe all of y'all have enough sense to be able to come together. Stop the name-calling. We are just like a, a circus. We are the lamp and stock. Everywhere you look is Tarrant City. And if we're not growing, nothing is being cleaned up. Tarrant looks like a dump. Because nothing can get done. It's too much going on. Nothing can get done. Nothing can get accomplished. All of y'all look the same in my eye. I don't care about Mayor being mayor. I don't care about the positions you guys hold. But at the end of the day, we're the ones who have to suffer through it. Whatever is going on, whatever your reason is, there's certain things that's talked about out here that should not be. You all should meet as a group and discuss it and come to some kind of terms that you can approach us without all of the name-calling. It's, it's too much.
It's, it's too much. Please think about the people who live here. And when, when I drive around, I really am just so anxious and ready to move from Tarrant to this ridiculous. I've been here over twenty years. And when I came here, it was some of the same people who grew up in the housing, Mr. Brown, Mr. Sweney, all of the older people. My street was so quiet, my kids didn't even want to stay over here because it was so quiet. But now we're just a mockery. We're the laughing stock. Everything you hear about Tarrant is about how they carry on. What went on in council meeting. But I ask y'all, please, remove your agenda and put our agenda in front of you. And what it's costing us in our city. And let's come together and try to make this the city that I know it can be. I don't back down from nothing I say, I stand behind everything I say. When I say I believe, you all know who Jesus is. I believe it. Imagine what he must be saying when he looked down at all of us. Imagine what he must be thinking. Look at my children. Look how, look how they're carrying on. And it's not just one of you. It's, it's all of you. It's a group. It is a group. Ms. Matthews, no, I love Ms. Matthews to death, but Ms. Matthews has her own way to do it. Ms. Matthews actually helped raise my triplets. I have a set of triplets that went to school, she never missed a time buying them things for school. She made sure they had what they needed. We didn't ask her to, she just took to them. If y'all can't come together, step down from your position. Okay, baby, I respect that. But know that my prayers are with you, and I love each and every one of you, but I love the citizens here too. So please do what's best for them.